Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call a meeting to order at 7 o'clock. And would we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're gonna deviate from our agenda slightly and jump to one part of new business to let David Lyons from Rodriguez Construction speak to us about the legacy apartment project because he's driving back to Buffalo. Welcome.
I appreciate it. Thank you. We were retained by the Barrington International Roots to project manage the rehab of the fire rehab. So we're underway with environmentals and stuff like that. We're getting started. So I guess all of you are familiar with the building. The roof has gone. So we're gonna start to get the roof building closed up so I can control the tappage. You just control the holes. I've talked to Tim Daly quite a bit. Actually, we know each other many days in Buffalo. So he's familiar. I will send all of the drawings, fully stamped drawings, Life2Go mechanical, everything, to Michelle. Email tomorrow morning. Here's a copy. They're not stamped, but if you guys want some reference, you wanna work through.
Okay.
I gave you some cards. Feel free to call me. I'll be here at least three, four days a week until we get everything under control. But I know there was just confusion on whether that's the goal. But it's strictly a fire rehab job. No bigger footprint.
It's exactly the same as the previous. Looked like it from the electronic plan.
Exact same thing. The Barrington Group is elected to... We're changing the windows. They're gonna replace the whole roof so the warranties are all equal as it goes through. So he's gonna update a lot of things. And then especially with Tim and the underwriters, we'll be updating the electrical and stuff as we go along.
Okay.
But it's a lot of extensive cleaning over the next couple of months. It's got a lot of mold on it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. That's about it. But like I said, any questions, call me.
Okay. Well, we'll be in communication with Tim and hopefully he and Michelle run things by us too in case there's some deviation. Jamie, did you have anything to say?
Yeah, so it's... Was it more than 50% destroyed?
Yeah. I think most of the damage that got into the other parts is water. You know, because they have Jeff Creek flooring. You're gonna have to take it all out everywhere. So the building sat, well, since January, I believe, right?
So, I mean, basically, if it's a replacement in time...
Yep.
Then, and it's not... If it was more than 50% destroyed, there might be some issues of are there non-conforming structures that need to get some kind of approval here at BBA? But as long as we, you know, are kept up to date and that there's no... That it's just a replacement, then it's not something that needs to come before this board.
Jim, we're kind of updating everything. Your stuff is gonna be... When it was built, things have changed. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in the building that even I know. So it'll all be updated.
Well, it's the exterior, right, that this board is concerned about. If there's no changes, no modifications, then we're...
We're gonna replace the whole roof, all the shingles from one end to the other. So all the warranties are on. A lot of the siding have come off and have to go back on because they're gonna update the windows, stuff like that. So replace railings, everything completely. But they seem very thorough. They wanna make sure that they'll be cleaned.
A lot of that's under Tim's program.
Well, it will all be, actually, unless there's a substantial change.
Okay. Well, thank you for taking the time to drive here. I take you for the day. Oh, you're here for the day. Good for you.
I got paid to go back to the dentist. I gave you the bill for your back.
For sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna jump back to old business. I'm gonna start with review of the minutes from Tuesday, September 23. Did everybody have a chance to review those? And does anybody have any changes, corrections, additions that weren't previously sent?
No.
James had some, didn't he?
No, I didn't. I actually sent that to... It looked fine to me.
Oh, okay. All right. So nothing? All right. So they could have a motion to approve? Oh, sorry, Michelle.
The agenda is actually incorrect. It should be August 26. I apologize.
I did send that.
You're right. But who knows what date it is, right?
I know.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve as corrected date.
As corrected for August 26th meeting.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Johanna? Alan Tabor? Unanimous, Michelle. All righty. And then first on the agenda, after the old first, is timeless tattoo. You'd like to come forward and address the board?
I know most of the others, but I'm title play. I'm on the road timeless tattoo. Baltimore resident. I've been a Baltimore resident for 22 years. I bought my house 19 years ago and I live as a family here in Baltimore. I run timeless tattoo. Obviously, I've been in business for 16 years, worked on the corner for 14, and now I'm looking to establish permanently in the village. And I bought a property, obviously, by mechanics 34 years ago. This has been a process for me. So I'm in front of you guys now. From my understanding, I should have been here before this step.
And who have you brought with you?
This is my architect, Andy. And this is my contractor, Ryan.
Thank you for coming. Okay, so we have plans in front of us.
Do you have plans?
Yeah. Oh, that's it. That's it. Sorry. We're sharing drives. And we're... Some of us have some of each. Sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
We were realizing that the drawings were split up and one has a site plan and one has a floor plan. So we're trying to figure out why we had different things. That's all. Now we don't. You have wall sections. So they apparently were folded separately and when they got handed out, we all got different ones. You may proceed. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure. I was asked to come based on some of the questions that we're asked.
Yeah.
By Greg, I believe. About the... Some of the calculations.
Greg is here.
Oh, sorry. Some of the calculations. And then the accessibility.
Yes.
And what are the other ones?
It looks like you updated the...
Oh, the crawl space area.
Yes.
It was updated to a basement. Or the notation was... Showed it's basement.
Yes. So it looks like you updated the siding. Showing the lights, the railings.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then the question that we had, the basement, they want the crawl space. And the concern is that the second floor is a primary use? And whether that would require ADA accessibility to the second floor?
So all of the services offered on the second floor will also be offered on the first floor?
Okay.
And the basement isn't... There's no services offered. It's just for mechanical use.
I think it was the height calculation in the code that tripped the...
In the basement, there was a concern with the basement.
Because it was 7'6" and that tripped the ADA compliance.
The second floor versus the first floor was labeled office and lobby on the first floor and studio 1 and 2. On the second floor, which made it...
Confusing.
Yeah. So that's more of a code issue than with me.
Okay. So it's still... If it's 7'6", it still needs to comply, correct?
It gets tricky. But the 7'8", actually, the basement.
7'8", okay.
So...
But it has to... If it's more than 7'6", I think it's the code.
It's a habitable space.
Yeah.
So whether every habitable space has to... And then the square footage, whether it's a big enough square footage, square footage comes into play. But the primary... What the second floor is a primary use and that would require ADA accessibility for sure.
Right.
The basement's a little trickier.
Okay. Did you understand what he was saying?
Well, for offering services, the same service that he provided on the second floor to the first floor, that's all you need to comply. There's no need to go in the basement regarding anything. Nobody's going in there, right?
No.
It's mechanicals.
It's not about somebody going there. It's about the heights. It's New York State Building Code. It's not us. It's New York State Building Code.
We have that, see, or...
I guess I'm... I'm not understanding. All the services that are provided in a building can be provided on the first floor. And so it's accessible. So I'm... And I guess I'm struggling to understand what you're saying.
Yeah. I'm not sure if that qualifies and whether it can be exempt from ADA accessibility in the second floor. The basement, being that it's just mechanicals, maybe it will be excluded. I'm not convinced the second floor can be. But that's a code issue that you need to take up with the codes office more than me.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. And then we, as a board, had some site plan questions, which looks like the site plan's down here. So your group is down. I think we asked questions about the dimensions on the survey. Are the dimensions there at the back of the building now? No.
Into its angle slightly.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. We were looking for the dimension from the back of the building to the property line to see if there was a way to move the driveway to the left-hand side for face... While you're facing the building to get the driveway away from the residential side and get it more towards the property line on the left side, which would be the south side.
Okay. What does that do as far as the residential area? I'm not sure.
Well, that's partly why we wanted to see the survey so that we knew what the dimensions were to see if it actually... To see if we're being reasonable, what we're asking to do. Because if there's space, it would be much more desirable to move it to that side of the building away from the residential side, understanding that if it doesn't fit on the lot, it doesn't fit on the lot. But, you know, that would be something that we would find desirable.
Okay.
We talked about... Sorry?
I think the showing that regardless of the property line would also be stated showing like behind that building like I just said last time, the main gas line is the main power line to help straighten out the back of that building. Plus on the...
Do they hang over the lot line?
I don't know if it's over that lot line, but it's still 10 feet, right? Regardless, the car goes left, right. Doesn't pay attention. First thing they're hitting.
But you have 9 feet on this side, so...
Actually, I think we maintain 10 feet there.
Okay.
So I think we... I think we centered that kinda. So I'll rewrite that with the architect tomorrow. I know we've had a worry about giving 9 feet for a car, but I think we're at 10 feet still with their...
Okay. So we really need to see the survey to figure that out collectively, I think. Because you're guessing too at this point. And it looks like you added a fence here along the residential side at the rear lot. I'm wondering if it should be extended further towards the front. The house is right here. And has the... We also discussed the parking. And the parking spaces that you have noted are generous in width. I think Greg pointed that out. And if we could squeeze those up a little, you could possibly get some additional spaces to keep people off the street because we started counting five studios, five clients, plus the friend they bring. We have a lot of cars. And the street is narrow for parking. There is on-street parking, but it's narrow. So if we can accommodate that and maybe even push back a little further on the lot with the parking so that you can get some more parking spaces in. And we wanted to see photo metrics on the lighting along the side, the residential side. There's... I saw the other day, I can see that the box is wired on the building.
On the residential side? Who's got it on residential?
There's none on the residential. They're only on the other side?
Yep.
Okay. So there's no lighting along the driveway?
No, there's no lighting along the driveway.
Okay. All right. Is there lighting on the back though for the parking?
Yes.
Okay. So can... Is there a lighting plant? Is that on there?
No, I think this is brownstone. I don't know on here. I don't think there is.
No. Okay. So do you have... Do you have a lighting plan that locates the fixtures for us and what the fixtures are?
I provided those at the Architectural Board.
Okay.
I don't know if you still have those, but I can just happen to buy them.
I'm trying to recall what the... I recall the fixture cuts, but I don't recall if they were located on the building.
So there are two on each side of the doors on the front.
On the front porch, yeah.
And in the rear.
Okay.
And then there are the spotlights that shine into the parking lot.
Okay. And then, which I recall were night sky compliant, dark sky compliant. And I think another thing that was mentioned was some landscaping in the front. Either side of the porch. Anything outside missing? Signage.
Signage.
Well, that would go to the ARB.
Mirror.
Yeah, that goes to the ARB. Mirror at the back corner, yep. Which I think you stated there would be for...
I know this has some mirror and this, but I think that's...
Okay.
And then we did mention runoff needs to be documented.
Oh, right.
Because there's no elevation site plan runoff for that. And that's important. We'll work on that right now.
Okay.
Trying to figure out how much flow.
So I think those are the things that we were looking for. And I think our biggest question was, is there enough property line to move the driveway? Because that would be much more desirable.
And I think that's important too because I do think there's a code. When it's a business abutting a residential district, the side yard has to be equal to the width of the adjoining presidentialist, whatever this piece of...
Okay.
So the code we try to add even to... Like the desirable would be maybe to have it on opposite with the residential side. That's one thing to just make sure that we have clear for the...
We can look that up.
Is that being considered? Are we still considering getting it moved to the other side?
We would prefer that if there's space. That's why we asked for the survey. And a landscape plan.
Where do you leave for the landscape plan?
Where the landscape is gonna be located and species.
Okay.
Just so we know. What do we think about the fence? Here.
I mean, if there's a house right next to the building?
There is.
I think there is. I think a fence for privacy would be...
Is it feasible to extend it at least to the front of the building? But that would depend on each driveway. Yes, right.
I agree. Should be to the front of the building. We have a whole other thing here with snow plowing and all of that to think about, but...
Right. Is it possible to have the driveway one-way on each side? So that way you kind of... You take some of the driveway away from the residential side and then...
It's one-way.
It's one-way either way.
This is one-way.
That's right.
Yeah. Like two cars can't pass. So good idea, but there's not enough space.
Did we mention, is it possible to have access in the back?
Oh, we talked about that. They don't... They're just using that to get their equipment in.
I know they're doing that now. I just didn't know when that...
No. It's somebody else's property.
It goes right by side by side to the lower alley. Maybe his property. That would be...
It would.
So if we did move that fence to the front?
Yeah. Not move it, extend it.
Extend it, right? Would that... I mean, we'll still give you the survey. Would that be enough? Because I mean, you're talking...
It helps, for sure.
Total lockers, the whole entire way down. That's what we talked about. In the meeting last time, right?
I mean, you know, the headlights...
Right. Now you have not...
Are gonna go in their living room windows, you know? So...
I'm just worried about, like you said, snow plowing. I'll bring that up on the survey and show you.
Sure. No, I think there's a reasonable accommodation if the fence comes all the way forward.
I'm just worried about more damage would happen to the adjacent building that side if something would happen versus this side hitting the fence.
Yeah.
Putting it back up with a day or two, you know, versus hitting all those mechanicals over there. So, but I can state that.
Until we actually know how much space is between the buildings and decide what's there, we can't really decide that.
Is the lot line staked? The property line staked at the back of the building?
I believe so.
Okay. So sometimes they don't stake at the whole length. We must have a survey, though, from the sale.
Yeah. I think we turned that... Yeah, Tim, I have it.
Okay.
I'll mark on it. I'll show some pictures and stop showing them to be not... Why I think that's not a good idea on that side. I guess it's showing the backs up.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? Do you have any other questions?
So procedurally, does this need to go to ARB?
It has.
Oh, it has. So...
Yeah. And they had comments, questions. They wanted to see the signage and all that. So they'll come back to ARB.
They still have to come back. Okay. Needs to go to county. But I don't know if we're... I guess we'll send what we've got. But there's no survey. And county usually wants a survey.
Right.
So it has to go to the... Because it's within 500 feet of a state or county road. So we have to send it. That's a timeframe that we have to... I don't know. I mean, I think the next submission might be due this week, but they like to see a survey. There's no surveys. So that's...
They have to have a survey from the sale.
We have the survey. The survey's been turned in. I know Tim has the survey. There's a survey here.
I can move that. Okay. So, all right. So it has to go to GML and we have to have a public hearing. So I don't know if you want to go for a public hearing the next meeting or, I mean, we're missing some stuff. I don't know what you want to do. But that's the question.
I want to do what you tell me to do.
Well, if you think we're gonna get everything, you know, within the next two weeks, then let's go ahead and have the public hearing and keep this moving. We can always close the public hearing and request more things. We don't have to make a decision.
All right. That makes sense. Seems like moving.
So we're gonna send the GML and we're gonna do public hearing. And I guess you can do a motion to call for the public hearing.
Okay. So can I have a motion to have a public hearing? James motioned. Who would second?
I'll second.
Andrew second. Hollis Tabor? There you go, Michelle. Okay. We're charging ahead. I'm sure you are. Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Ron's boundary loss.
Yeah, we don't have... Does anybody have a... This is just the wall.
Okay. Can I have a...
Yeah, you can have this. Put it on the...
Take those.
Here, it's 700. Do you guys have any of this?
I think we've shuffled our papers. Yeah. Good evening.
So as Kerry said, we kind of really here to give an update to the board. We did submit an entirely clean set of drawings, but there's only really one modification and that's the elimination of a piece of the road planned north of the clubhouse in the center of Green that used to connect in two... Connected two places. So you have three buildings on either side of the green. The connection is only one now. It provides more stormwater management area and less wetland impact. So other than that, it's really details and clarifications that are in the set. Nothing else has changed other than we did move the garages back at Greg's suggestion, five feet from the drive lanes[1547.54] other than we did move the garages back at Greg's suggestion, five feet from the drive lanes to give some visuals.
Okay, sorry.
We did, we have submitted to Greg and Jamie a preliminary subdivision map that subdivides the parcels into two from, I don't know, there are four or five. We have received capacity assurance from Anadag County WEP, together with what the offset mitigation requirement will be, so that is done. We did meet with Tony McIntyre, who's the chief, fire chief.
Okay.
Ran through hydrant locations. We added three locations of the fire department connections, turning radiuses. We gave him all the movements to prove that his trucks can maneuver through the development. He's aware that the connection to the north of the green is gone. He did not need that. All the firefighting sides of the building were identified. He was satisfied with all those. So I think Tony is very happy with where this is now. He requested certain storage connections on the hydrants, and whatever he needs, we'll give it. We did flow the hydrants, so we know we have capacity, both flowed pressure, both on Genesee Street and on 370. We connected it to two mains through the development, which is a good practice, so. We did go to the ARB on the 2nd of September. We were approved with a condition related to lighting. You have the same setup, both site lighting, building mounted lighting, that we are back in the ARB on the 6th of October, things like that. Other than that, we did get our Army Corps wetland permit, so we're set with all the wetland permitting we need.
Okay. Okay.
We did get Greg's comment letter. Nothing seems to be particularly troublesome, and we'll work together. The landscaping, I think, is an open issue. I think if you look at the plans, there's plenty of landscaping, but maybe species changes, and there's some screening that we've talked to the Pluffs about to do from.
Along 331, G East Genesee Street.
Which we need to add, so. Some combination of fence and probably evergreen trees that would screen there, so.
Okay, great.
I have a question. Is the issue with Bevo Supplies' corner piece taken care of and resolved yet?
It is not. It's an ongoing discussion. We have provided them three sets of turning movements to enter and exit, and a curb cut out into our driveway as an alternate to only using their curb cut. I have a set of those turning movements. There's a meeting Friday morning. We are, we thought we were there, but we're not quite there.
Okay.
So.
Well, obviously that, you know, your site plan approval hinges on summing that up, but there are other things that you're still working on as well, so.
Yeah, we have gone as far as facilitating the lender needs to swap the land with us, and SBA needs, so we're making all the efforts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate the update, and.
We'll be back.
Just a couple notes, Greg, I know you have a note in here on landscaping issues, such as, as far as if more analysis was required or needed, I would say we probably would want that at some point.
Yeah.
And just specifically, to the left of building A and to the left of the garage that's just north of building A, there's a very small non-landscaping that was in the original plan, so it wouldn't necessarily be a matter of changing what's there, just some additional coverage for the residents that's on Genesee Street.
That's what I was mentioning when I said along Genesee Street.
Right here.
Oh yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. And I think it probably should be a fence and some.
I agree.
We did talk to Mr. Pluff after the ARB meeting about it, so.
Okay.
Between now and the next meeting, we'll present something.
Okay.
And we'll have the county refer by then as well.
Yeah, John thought tomorrow?
It's tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, okay.
Which is but a month for us.
Yes, I know.
But he'll see whatever's on there.
Yeah, okay.
It's not the first time they've seen this either. They saw it back when the original PDD.
Oh, right, yeah.
Came out, so.
So we'll see what they say about.
The only other one that I don't know exactly is at the Prince property, it's kind of a title issue that we.
The driveway you can grow.
Which one is the Prince property up here?
Near the Prince. Yeah, I just don't know what to do with it. There's a small, like half the driveway is on the Bronz boundary piece, and half the driveway is on the property.
Oh.
Weren't they giving a right-of-way easement for that though?
It's in a, it's in a state, isn't it, right now?
Yeah, it is. We thought it was an easement. It shows differently in the tax maps and other documents, so I think it's a title issue.
On the tax map, is it shown half and half, or?
No, it's kind of blocked, blocked out. If you look at the survey. It's this piece right here.
And I know you changed the.
I don't know where the property line is, whether it's up here.
And that's why I think the property line could be passed, and I'm worried about.
Did we look at this one? What's the four? Well, do we care about the encroaching? What's their problem? We don't care.
Okay.
Yeah, driveway is more of a non-issue for us.
Yeah, it's not a, whatever they want to deal with, with those people, they can deal with it, doesn't matter.
I mean, make them into play if they developed that as a commercial piece at that time.
Sure.
But at this point, it's not a.
Yeah, it's not gonna hold anything up.
Could just be an exchange of properties. There's a area that didn't get.
They might have to deal with it later, but not a thing right now.
Well, good to know, thank you.
So the overall stuff is pretty minor. There's some, you know, minor, like there's a really tight spot, we want a parking lot, so we'd like to just, you know, it might cost a couple of parking spaces, you might have to move or something. Just add some landscaping, a very slight, light trespass over there that can easily.
From building F was that?
Yeah, by building F. The utilities, I think, were in good shape with them, especially with the connection to Genesee Street. That would be one of our recommendations, but they've already gone there. Couple spots with some type rating that can easily be fixed, just for maintenance purposes. The, you know, the Bevo Supply would just want to make sure that the access is there, and whether, you know, we need to look at the site plan a little bit there, I don't know, you know, just to make sure that we're happy with what's happening there.
Right, with what the final conclusion is.
Yep. Other than that, we will look at the landscaping in more detail. And I don't think there was really anything else that was significant, some side wall connection.
I read it just before the meeting, and it didn't, it doesn't look like there was anything that was here, which is just fine tuning, which is where we are right now, I think.
Yeah, and probably one of the bigger ones is some lighting on that walk, yeah, towards F.
Yeah.
It doesn't get lit up like a Christmas tree, but I would like, personally, from a safety standpoint, I think I would do a light.
What about like some ballards or something?
It could be ballards, it could be solar power.
So it's not a big globe, but there's some.
Safety, we always tend to put short poles, you know.
Yeah, understood.
Just because they didn't act, yeah, polluters always end up getting.
There, we.
Susceptible to vandalism.
We did expect some solar powered lights. We have for a grant, that I think we're gonna go with the Bronz at Old Island.
Okay.
That's gonna still be the case, but I can look at those and see if those, they're pretty, they're like 12 foot high. You know, they're not really shining beneath the windows.
If you want to send those to John O'Brien and Charlie and copy us so that we're in the loop, that'd be great.
Can do.
So can we get a public hearing for the October planning board meeting, or? Will we need a public hearing, or?
We have.
We have, we have one.
We have one.
I think we already did.
Yeah, we did.
And I don't think it's changed enough.
No, nothing significant has changed, but I can see.
We did it for the site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Well, we did that for the.
Seeker.
For the seeker, but we didn't, we haven't done it for the site plan. So.
But they had.
They had a site plan, but the seeker.
We did, right, they did. The site plan involved, I think, as I think it's refined, I think, words need to be for the actual zone change itself.
Right.
Which would be with the.
Which is gonna be.
The village board.
It'll be the village board. That's what we decided, thank you.
Next time we go to that.
Yeah, next time we go to the.
I was gonna say, the Secor is.
Zoned board.
It'll go to the town board.
Town board.
Village board.
Village.
Some board.
Oh my God. Sort of.
He has to be earlier in the morning for us to get it right. Late in the day.
So. When do we make that referral, Jamie?
We can soonish.
Like after the next meeting?
Yeah, probably.
After we resolve some of these issues?
If everything's resolved, you know, including the subdivision, then we can.
Okay.
Do that.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in and providing an update. We appreciate the communication.
Killed a lot of trees.
I know. That's okay. The ARB can use these. The ARB. I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, next we have new business, and it looks like we have Baldwin Hill Estate expansion on the agenda.
I also have add size plans, if that's easier to look at.
I'll take the half size.
Oh, yeah.
So this is all like trees and gullible stuff down here. Okay, we're catching up here, sorry.
There's a little truck right here.
Yeah, right here.
All right, I think we have our bearings, thank you. For a moment here. Now that we all know where we are, so.
So if you want, I can give you a general. So if you're looking at Google Earth, the site will look like this. Budweiser is here, Baldwin Hill Apartments are right here, and so this is 631, 31, and then 370 would be way down here. This is the existing Baldwin Hill. And this is the remaining 30 acres that has been undeveloped. It's zoned R-1A. And then, so as part of the subdivision, we would extend the road through the Town of Lysander. The village and down line is right here. So this roadway would go through the Town of Lysander, Route 31, to give all of these residents a connection to 31 rather than having to take all the way through the existing Baldwin Hill subdivision. There is an aqua easement here, an existing water main through the site here that would have to be relocated as part of the subdivision. And a wetland delineation has been done. We're still waiting on a jurisdictional determination to be completed. I guess we're really here, very preliminarily, to get any board comments before we move through the full design and sweep. So that way, if you say you want a buffer somewhere, roadway adjusted, it's better to do it now than after we spend a lot of time going through the design and drainage calculations.
Okay, and where there, I was reading that quickly, is are there multiple phases to this? Or you're gonna build all the infrastructure and the roads and then sell the lots one at a time? Is that the?
Yes, that would be.
So you'll build the road that's the connection all the way through the Town of Lysander to 31?
Yes, the whole roadway would have to be constructed prior to being able to build or sell the lots.
Fire?
Yes.
Okay.
Big side.
That was my initial question.
So the exit road, or the proposed road that comes out to 31, just to orient, would that road go through what is currently the, like, Jipson Express building?
Yeah.
Yeah, that building is roughly here, per reference, so that would have to be demolished in the real place.
Is it Gams Dockhouse?
Clarns.
Dockhouse.
Clarns is either this property.
Or, yeah.
So it would be this property here, adjacent to it. So that's a completely separate parcel, not part of this.
I'm just thinking about elevation and, you know, digging up what's there from Jipson, and having it at work.
Yes, it certainly is possible. We have pulled out all of the site, so we can provide a great plan that shows the roadway elevation, obviously, as part of. That would be reviewed by the Town of Lysander, because it's in the Town of Lysander, but I assume you want to locate it as well.
Does developer own this whole parcel here?
Yes. That was a purchase about two years ago. So he owns three tax parcels, this one, this one, and that one.
We should probably see some idea of what he's planning for the, as far as Seeker goes.
Yeah.
So what about the traffic impacts of that intersection so close to the bypass intersection and. And the hinkle that goes this way, the lot you want in there.
It's gonna be part of our state DOT permanent.
Yeah.
So I think we should coordinate the two projects with the town, just so we know what's going on.
Yes.
They actually, and what goes in town parcel, and then what access restrictions, if any, could place that in.
Yes, agreed. Yeah, I mean, there was, there was mentioned in the paperwork of us being lead because the majority is in the village, but we definitely need to coordinate with the Town of Lysander for sure. I don't know how we facilitate that specifically, but we do.
And we can talk to the engineer and determine if they would like, you know, how to write the handles.
Okay.
If we take a lead, then we need to kind of keep them informed.
Yes.
Kind of a, they go parallel, we should make sure we're closely on town.
So not to complicate this further, but Al Jaeger from CHA is the town engineer, so it'll be Jason Hoy, as they have some type of agreement with Van Deere, and so Jason would be reviewing this on behalf of the town. Just so everyone's aware.
Yep. That's still single property.
Too late.
One each way, but it's only a yearly.
And it's zoned commercial, so right now we have approval of a storage building. Albrecht used to use there, and this is all used, obviously, as their truck and storage lot. I don't believe they have any plans, but we'll confirm that. Yeah, so.
So at least for right now, we're just gonna state what it is.
Yeah.
Other than.
Yes, storage.
And that's perfectly fine, it makes it easier.
Let's gonna stay as it is, sorry, we couldn't hear.
So we're talking about the use, the proposed use on this.
Oh, on that property?
So this parcel in the Town of Lysander is zoned PDD or PUD, I forget how they refer to it there. But it is currently used, they have their, like, dump trucks and storage.
Oh, the Town of Lysander, what is that?
The Albrecht.
Oh, the Albrecht, okay.
And we have approval of a storage building here, which we can add to this plan to clarify. So they would, instead of using the existing Jipson Express, they would construct their new storage building.
Okay.
And run operations out of that, just be a maintenance facility.
So essentially, the parcel to the west is gonna stay the same use as it is today, and then the smaller parcel to the east is gonna be stored, built for the Albrecht. So that's, that kind of solves the, you know, what's gonna happen to those pieces of real estate.
Unless it changes later, but sure.
Well, but, you know, because after the plan, if there's a plan.
I mean.
It's not.
Yeah, I'm concerned about all of the driveways a lot, which I know is not, you know, that's the state, but it's a lot of driveways without lights. There's only the light at Budweiser.
Yeah.
So.
Because the proximity of the bypass, someone turning right out of there, and someone trying to turn left, you know, that just.
Yeah, the movements are tight.
Well, I have Gordon Tran, her stands area is part of our DOT permanent, complete a traffic study.
Okay, so everybody's kind of been reviewing amongst themselves here. Does anybody have any comments that they want to bring up or questions that they want to ask at this point, so we make sure we catch everything?
So this would be just like site plan and whatnot, there's no PDD needed for this? If it's a subdivision, it's only, it's only our, it's already zoned that way, so it's.
Yeah.
Now, is that up here, at the north there where the driveway comes through, is that zoned R1?
That's in the Town of Lys.
Oh, that's, okay, so.
So that's part of the Radisson PDD or PUD, I forget.
So it's not commercial, even though there's commercial there?
So, yes, it is. The Radisson, like Budweiser is part of the Radisson, or PDD as well. It's, I think, within the PDD, it's dedicated for commercial use.
Okay.
Jake's probably asked this probably ever.
I might be.
The main question.
We'll get a little too far, but it looks like, is there like water or ponds back there?
Yeah.
Which location? There are lot lines.
The bottom of our hill.
So. Oh, that is to this.
That's way far.
That's the parcel. Yeah, that, so there's your small lot line fingers that have been delineated in the site that we're waiting on the JD.
That one, bot, like, tell it to you.
Yes, so that's what we need the JD to determine, if it's an Army Corps or a DEC. If it's a DEC, obviously, there would be a hundred foot buffer added to these, and we would have to lose some lots. If they are DEC, we'd probably end up losing this road scene and all of the lots on them as well, but we're still waiting on that. But we're still waiting on the jurisdictional determination. We figured that we would complete our secret form with a higher number of lots.
Yeah.
And it's always better to go down.
Right.
So do we worry, I mean, obviously the fire department has to review this, but do we worry about Road C that's a dead end?
It's got a hammer on it, it looks like.
Yeah, but what if a tree falls down up here?
No.
I mean, we don't worry about that?
No, I mean, if it was, if it was a much longer road, if they came in here and they didn't have this connection to 31, it would be, be a different story.
Okay, I just meant Road C.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm.
I know, I know in the past and some of the other developments, the fire department has knocked into that.
They may not like the, they may not like the turnaround the way it is.
Right.
And that may be something where it may become a, a shorter road with a cul-de-sac and.
Right.
Lots flaring off of it.
Okay. Something that, I mean, not.
Would you like us to reach out to the fire department or do you want it to come from this board?
I think you can reach out to them directly. It would get you a little bit ahead of the game to know what they're going to say.
Yeah.
We have to defer to their expertise. They know how long your trucks are. Curious, the, the back lots of like six, seven, eight, nine, what happens with the grading though? Are they just going to cliffs?
That's what I was asking.
So it will drop off quite a bit.
Yeah.
But there's also about 150 feet of flat area.
Flat.
So it would be the same as if it was, the property line was cut off there. They'll just, I would assume that'll likely remain woods.
Okay.
I don't think it would even be cleared. They'd have to clear that on their own.
So, so would you change the property lines then to that? Or would they own a piece of the woods?
So I, they would own a piece of the woods, cause if we cut the property line off, then it's going to be a landlocked parcel that has no value.
Yeah.
So that helps the assessor and the tax base to include those in the parcels and you can charge them a little more.
Creative architecture.
Yes.
Like the right falling water tech designing shop.
They all would, remember. All those groups leave. Okay, does anybody else have any additional on these preliminary looksees on the space? Okay.
Thank you.
Looking forward to see where you get to next.
I think the biggest thing is the traffic in a lot of places.
Yes.
That'll be the biggest.
Agreed. Traffic, wetlands, fire department.
Yes.
Those are your biggest. Do you have a timeline on the project?
I mean, ultimately we'll be able to move forward as quick as possible, but we're talking about the DEC and DOT.
Yeah.
So I don't see any reason for us to come back to the next meeting without.
I mean, I, I mean, until you have that information back from, I don't, I don't think you need to. There's nothing to evaluate until we see that, so.
So as planned on November, and then I can reach out to Michelle and let you know.
I think that's fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's the extent of our business. Michelle did want me to mention to everyone that the zoning board has requested village hard hats and safety vests for everyone. So that when you go on site, you have a hard hat and a safety vest and name badges so that people know who you are. And so if you go on a site, you need to come to the village hall and sign out a hard hat and a safety vest, unless most of, like most of us, we have our own, so we would just identify ourselves, I guess, with our name tag at, at that point. Right, so the zoning board felt that they should have that when they go on site. And so obviously, we're not buying vests for everyone to keep, so we're signing them up at the village hall. So when you go on site, do we know when we will have these?
They were ordered yesterday.
They were ordered yesterday, okay, so.
I assume we're authorized to go on site if we're trying to look at something. Do we have to clear that with anyone first?
So you, you don't really have authority to go on somebody's property. You can ask them, you know, you can walk around it.
And if it's a construction site, you would, you would go directly to the construction office, but I, I'm not really sure when we would be roaming around sites quite often.
Well, and that's what I was trying to understand. So why do, you know, the, the hard hats and the badges and the things for?
Um, the zoning board requested.
Okay.
Well, they thought people should be identified when they go on site, and maybe they go on site.
That is, that is a thing, and we, a lot of towns do have name tags, like, hey, you know, what year.
When you go, I mean, myself, when I go on a job site, if I don't have my HKK shirt or, or a hard hat, you know, people want to know who you are, rightly so, so.
That I understand.
Yeah.
You don't want to cause unexpected OSHA to interfere with projects.
Without, with going on site without a hard hat, so. If you have your own, you know, free to use your other. But we generally don't.
Well, that's what I was wondering, you say, are we planning on doing something, cause, you know, I think you're almost in here.
No, my bad. I mean, when, if you think about it, when Brons Foundry was starting, there were several people that went there and.
Yeah, I would have loved that, that'd be cool.
So, and, and occasionally we do have a tour with a, but, you know, generally with the property owner or their representative, and we do go on site, but it's not often. But.
Okay.
So generally noted, when you go on a site, you need identification, hard hat, safety vest. Got it?
Or a minimal name tag.
Right, which we will have the name tags as well soon?
I'm assuming that's me. I don't think it was to come in also.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for following up on the request and getting name badges for all of us and letting us know the procedure for signing things in and off. Appreciate it. With that said, I don't think we have any other business unless somebody else has something. No, okay, so could I have a motion to close the meeting at 7:57?
I'll make a motion to close, Chris.
Chris? James second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously, Michelle. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Terry, for sticking it out.
Thanks.